Morning. We'll call the regular board meeting to order. It's Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. It's 10 o'clock a.m. And we're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room, Melody Lane Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And would you stand, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, foundation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and testing. Thank you. You may be seated. The order of deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting, and the board may vote to recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. We begin with the roll call. District one.
Rosby is here.
District two supervisor English is present. District three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams, computer, or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 211-271-838. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-92004-DIRECTION. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on the agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board by 9 o'clock a.m. on the day of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and that means that some presentation materials displayed at the board may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public, and I have two. The first one is Inga McCord. Kathleen Buchanan. Do you have three minutes?
Yeah.
Give your name and address.
Buchanan. I live at 1435 South Peaceville Place Lane Bisbee. And I'm here to speak about the Camp Riff project again because I'm just so disappointed in the fact that the 52 signatures of the local residents that live around Camp Riff were not even a consideration for this project. They were all opposed to it. They're all going to be impacted by that project. And you know, the Bisbee Foundation says, "The Foundation's focus is to play a role in Bisbee's future by working with groups, individuals who are in the arts, humanities, education, and historic preservation with goals designed to preserve and enhance." And also that they are so, our mission is to enhance the historical culture and human qualities that make Bisbee unique. Well, this golf course, if you read the article that was actually put out by Camp Riff in February of 2024, and you are aware of the history of this golf course and what it meant to this community, I can't understand how we can let it go away for a campground. This place, if it had been run correctly, and there are so many grants and funds available to fund something like this, and so many ways to earn money for this golf course. There are two golf courses within an hour of Bisbee, and that's it. And the projected annual income from revenue of the golf course industry in Arizona is 24.7 billion this year. And I just, I just don't understand how this campground with three campgrounds, RV campgrounds already in this community, that you'll take away their livelihood if this project ever gets developed. I can't imagine that the pencil is gonna find that we can pay 20, 35 billion that he says it's gonna develop cost to develop this property with campground fees, much less the damage it'll do to the existing RV parks already in the community. But it's just a shame that so much history is gonna be lost because of this project. Thank you.
Inga McCord.
My name's Inga McCord. I'm from Stump Canyon, 35 years there. I am actually flabbergasted to find out that this kind of a change has been passed. I understand that a great number of the neighbors who live in this area are opposed to it. It's gonna bring light pollution, excessive water use for a high-density RV park. Traffic is gonna change, and it'll require probably money on the part of Bisbee to correct that. Accidents can occur until that happens. What I really don't understand is why you guys, people, whatever you are, continue to ignore the local neighborhoods. I followed the gas station down in the Mosin Road area. Most of the neighbors objected to a business coming into that basically open space with some homes. And so that was voted down by the planning and zoning, but now I've heard it's been resurrected. And do you just beat on them long enough that people give in? I don't understand why if the vote is taken, they don't abide by the wishes of the neighbors and go somewhere else. Seems to me that this is a big waste of tax dollars if you have a group meet and vote, and then again, you have, they reword things, and you have the same group meet and vote. You just keep doing that until it passes. And I think that's a tremendous waste of money and time on the part of the public and the elected officials. Why don't we just let the neighborhood speak? After all, we are the, we the people. And these people are now devastated, the ones that are near this turquoise valley and the ones that are out in the Mosin Road area. How come eventually they just get beaten to a pulp and get ignored? I think there's a, this is a flawed system, and I'd like to see the good guys win for a change instead of always the guys with the big bucks that are coming in to change a neighborhood forever. You can't undo 500 RV slots or whatever it is. It's, it's kind of, it's really the rape of this portion of Bisbee, and I highly disapprove of these decisions.
Good time is up. Thank you. Next item we have on the agenda is a presentation by the Public Works and Engineering and Natural Resources Department on the Cochise County Road Maintenance System and the criteria requirements for maintained and non-maintained roads. So this has been a question that's been asked many times, and so this is a presentation that not only will they give it to us verbally, but I think they have handout materials that they'll be able to give people in the future. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jackie Watkins and Jason Fazio.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So yeah, this presentation is about the process to, for county maintained roads, why we maintain certain roads and why we don't maintain others, and the process to add and maintain roads to the system or for citizens, the residents, to maintain their old roads. Do we have roadway classification? There's state highways. Then there's local roads in the city and towns. And on the county maintained roads, some road highway, some roads are declared county highways, not meaning that it's a highway, just that because of traffic count, it's just a legal status of the county maintained highway. County highways then can be added to maintenance when it's declared by the board and spend funds to construct the roads. And those are the county, and then we have another system for adopting roads into maintenance that are primitive roads or dirt roads. There's then public roads that are not accepted for maintenance, and then there's also private roads. There's approximately just over 5,000 miles of road in the unincorporated area of the county. Of those, 1,433 miles are maintained by the Cochise County with 694 miles of paved roads and 739 miles of dirt roads, and of those, 431 miles are primitive roads. And those roads are maintained or graded by operation.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jason Fazio, Public Works, Cochise County. I just wanted to mention that currently our dirt roads are maintained every nine to 12 weeks. We have a couple of roads that are maintained every four weeks, and that's Cascabelle and Geronimo Trail up the mile post 13.5. And then the primitive roads, we're currently doing twice a year. Just wanted to throw that out there so you guys know about how often the maintenance is happening on our roads currently.
We have a GAS map if someone wants to inquire if their road is maintained by the county. So this is a new map that Terry did, and that's on our website. And this is just a blown up of the map. And you can see that the blue is the roads that are paved. The red and orange are dirt roads, and the red one are primitive roads that are classified as primitive roads. So a primitive road, it means it's, was constructed before 1990, not to any standard. It was just someone bladed a road. But you can see from this map, all the white roads out there, and those are roads that are either private roads or public roads, but not maintained by the county. So in the Sierra Vista area, this is in the service area, you know, there's just as many roads not maintained that are maintained. And they were just done by developers or people buying a property and splitting it five times and creating roads. And the roads are funded by the gas tax, not our property tax. And those are for the maintenance and construction of the roads. So they're called the Highway User Revenue Fund by state statute. And the Arizona gas tax is a flat fee. It's 18 cents a gallon, and it's been there since 1990. Cochise County receives .12 cents a gallon for every gallon that's spent. So if you bought 50 gallons of gas a month, you'd pay $9 in HERF tax, and about 6 cents of that comes back to Cochise County. But that's the major funding that we have. We get around 11 million in HERF funds. And then there's vehicle license tax, and about that, we get about 2.5 million. And these are how roads are maintained or added to maintenance for eligibility. And a public road is one that's been dedicated to the county or public by fee or easement. And then on the left side of the graph there, if a subdivision comes into the county and it's a platted legal subdivision accepted by the board, then the developer has to pay for the cost of constructing and designing the road, and then those roads are automatically accepted into the county system, but they're built to county standards. Then if it's not built to county standards and it was open prior to 1990, it may be added by our Resolution 1901 for adding and dropping roads. We try to keep the same amount of roads that we're maintaining just because of the funds to keep those roads maintained. Then if it was opened up after 1990, like a lot of some of the newer subdivision or property that's being developed today, then those are not eligible for maintenance unless they bring them up to county standards. Then if it's not a public road, it must be declared as a county highway to be added to maintenance. And if it was a public road that was open before 1950, then it may be added per Resolution 1901. And if it was not maintained by the county since 1950, it cannot be added to maintenance. We had our add-drop dirt road maintenance. We're dropping a road in the resolution. These are just highlights from the resolution. If it's a count, traffic count less than 20, if there's encroachments into the road or the pinion of the road users, there's some people that want their road dropped for maintenance, that they'd rather maintain them themselves, and those can be dropped for maintenance. Then to add a road, we need a minimum 50 feet of right-of-way and constructed prior to June 13, 1990. And that would be continuous to a county maintained road with a traffic count higher than 180, traffic counts. And then those roads may be added, but we would have to drop another road so that we keep the number of miles of roads consistent. Another way that residents can improve their roads is they can do a road improvement district. And the residents then would be responsible for the class of design and construction to county standards, and then the county would assume the maintenance of the road, and that's by state statute, Title 48, Chapter 6. Then there's also road improvement and maintenance districts. When the residents want to get together, they come up with how they want to maintain their roads, if they want to grade them once a month, every six months. They come up with what the cost is to do that every year. That's then would be added to the person's property tax, and then they would all be paying the same amount. And all of these, these two issues are promoted by the residents. So this is something that the residents want. It's not something that the county, you know, asks them to do. But we do have two road improvement maintenance districts in the county. One is Fairfield Estates, and the other is High Knoll Ranches, both in the service area. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board members?
Madam Chair, first, I do have a point of order, and that is, as the meeting proceeds, I would invite Madam Judd to make all the motions. So just for the sake of simplicity. And then for Ms. Watkins, thank you very much for that PowerPoint. It's great to have all that information on record. Do you have any comments about Old Ranch Road off Jackalope in Dragoon at this time?
Yes, that was a road that's been there since the turn of the century, 1800s, and it's the public access to Butterfield Beach Coach. So that's a historic place, and it is the access to that. It is not a county maintained road, but it was on a county map and declared a county highway. I think like 1901, before we were state. That road has been there since before Arizona was a state. So it is providing access to some historic places and historic grave sites.
Thank you.
And, and, Madam Chair. It does say that, on the road improvement district, residents responsible for custom design and construction to improve public roads to paved county standards. And I remember early on when I first became a supervisor, there is a graded road county standard as well.
But the graded road is not for adding roads to maintenance. It's just how we maintain our own roads.
Okay.
Or if, in the subdivision, like if special use, if there is an agriculture special use, and they wanted to just provide a graded road to their special use, it wouldn't be a public road for maintenance. Then that's the standard that they would develop for their special use on a parcel.
Because what I remembered when they brought that new design forward, and you were in the department but not the, the director or the county engineer at the time. They brought it forward, and I, I really believed that was, so there's been many misunderstandings because I still believed that that was, if a community brings their road to the standard, we could continue to maintain it. Because maintaining, basically maintaining a paved county road, you know, that's why we pave some of our roads so we don't have to grade them anymore. You know, that's, that's a benefit to us actually in the long run. So I believed that, and that's not true. Fancy you fix your gravel road. As a community, the county's not gonna start maintaining it.
We're gonna maintain it because we don't have the funds to maintain all these roads.
Okay.
If, the other way, like Pima County, Penal County, Maricopa County, and Yavapai, they have gas tat, or they have taxes, you know, sales tax that they've added, and those funds then are used for maintaining more roads than what we do because we do not have an additional tax to offset some of the cost of paying or constructing and maintaining additional roads that we don't have.
And money is always an issue for the county and for your department especially.
Low populated counties.
But every single, I just wanna say this for everybody's benefit. Every single person has a voice at the legislature, and the legislature can affect the HERF funding, how much is collected, how much is distributed to the counties, they can. And that's something that maybe people that are concerned about this should, should do individually. Go to their legislators and, and see if they can have an effect there.
Yeah, HERF funds are calculated by population. And a lot of the other states have increased their, like we're 18 cents and some other states, you know, 50 cents, so they have more funds. But our legislature has not increased it since 1990.
So just think of the, the change in the cost of everything since 1990.
Yeah.
When they set that, but the legislature refuses to change that.
Yeah.
And that's where it has to happen.
Today, it costs a million dollars a mile to make a road paved road or an asphalt road.
So say that one more time so people hear it, so they, they understand that it's not like you can take a grader out there and fix stuff.
It's about a million dollars a mile to pave a road to add aggregate base course and asphalt, and for a chipso road, it's around 500,000 a mile. And costs are increasing.
Right.
They're not going down.
You have any other comments, Tom?
No, not at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
Who's good?
No, thank you.
Well, I, I thank you for putting this information together because we do have people that keep wondering, the road looked okay when they bought their property, and so they thought it was maintained. And then they get really upset when they come in and find out that it isn't just people moving out that causes us to go out and maintain a road. There's criteria, and most of the time, they don't meet that criteria.
And that's why we put the, the new website, the map, that you can see if your road's going to be maintained or not.
And so they need to talk to their realtors if they haven't asked that question. You know, that's a question that they need to start asking instead of assuming. Okay, thank you very much, Jason.
I do have one more thing if I could mention at the end of this forum. The, there are people in the communities that maintain roads, and they, they really aren't as expensive as people think it's worth it. If your road needs to be fixed, you can hire someone to fix it. And if, if a community, I, we've done this up at our, our mountain property. If a community gets together and everybody pitches in, you can bring somebody in to fix it, and then it's good for a while, no matter how bad it is right now.
And some of the 36-acre lots, reported surveys, they have homeowners association, and they get together and grade their roads.
But there are a lot of companies. I don't know if the county can do that, but maybe have, like they do with the health department. They, they give suggestions of people you can go to for different problems. Maybe we can have a list or some, I don't know if we could do that.
We have a plan that they could contact the Contractors Association.
Okay.
Register contractors.
So you do make that suggestion. That's a really good idea to just be helpful that way. So.
I think for us giving a list, it would, it would put a stamp of approval on it.
Right, yeah.
To do that because we don't know what that would.
And we can, we can add to our website that if they're wanting to find a grader, they can contact, register contract.
That would be good.
I think that would be a positive step.
Yeah, because then they have someone to call. Let's get started.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have the consent agenda, and that's items one through four.
Madam Chair, I move you approve consent agenda items one through four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Now we move to public hearings. The first one is with the Planning and Zoning Department, adopting zoning ordinances. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt zoning ordinances, ordinance 24-07 to rezone tax parcels. 11705067, 11705068, 11705069, 11705070, and 11705071 from SR43, single household resident, residential, one dwelling per 43,560 square feet to SR174, single household residential, one dwelling per 174,000 square feet pursuant to the application of Rockbridge Revocable Trust, Lynn Haber.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Matthew, would you give us the information that we need, and then I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair and board members. This is the staff presentation for docket RC 24-06. So requested downzone from SR43 to SR174. Without repeating all the information provided in the motion, property is located in Sun sites Unit 2. Comp plan designation is rural, as is the Gormit area. Property is located in Sun sites approximately five and a half miles west of Highway 191. And currently zoned SR43, surrounding something is also SR43 with some additional RU4 in the area. Some drone imagery of the property. Property total is about 5.7 acres. Located at the corner of Cochise Stronghold and Street in Sun sites. Other image. The resulting factors, the property, one factor, it does not comply. A concept plan was not provided. Six factors do not apply because it's a downzone. So the remaining nine of 10 factors do apply for this downzone, as is typically the case. Factors in favor of approval, complies with eight of nine applicable factors. Composed uses compatible with the existing residential dwellon pattern, which is very low density. The downzone will reduce the number of allowed principal dwellings, and staff has not received any opposition from neighboring property owners. Factors not in favor, none have been identified. 17 April, staff completed the public notification process. We mailed out 22 notices to property owners within 300 feet. We received one response in favor from someone outside the notification area, and we also received a one phone call. It's just a basic inquiry as to what was happening. Madam Chair, the recommendations, based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket RC 2406 without conditions by a vote of eight to zero during their meeting of May 8, 2024. Based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of docket RC 2406. Reserving parcels 11705067 through 071 from SR43 to SR174 without any special conditions. And Madam Chair, that completes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions from the board.
Okay, let me open the public hearing, and I don't have any record of anyone that wishes to speak, but I'm on a public hearing. I need to open it up to the audience. If there's anyone present that wishes to speak on this issue, either for or against. There are none. Now, close the public hearing. If the board have any questions, comments.
No, ma'am.
I don't have to.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. If there's no questions or comments, then I will call for the vote. I believe we have two recommendations. So did the original statement cover both of those? It were zoning ordinance and?
Well, the second part would be, our, basically, the second recommendation would be basically restating the motion. And it does specify that without conditions, but I don't think, is that a significant change from the motion that we originally made?
No, it's not. You can just read it from the motion, and if you wanna just.
Because we already made a motion, so as long as we're covered, we can.
That's fine, and it's been, it's been covered in the presentation that there are no conditions. Okay.
Okay, then if there's no further changes that need to be made, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there, if there's no further discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. Okay, we move now to action items on the agenda. And the first one is the county treasure.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve contract 24-19-TRE-01 Banking Services with Wells Fargo Bank, N.A., effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027, with the option to renew through June 30th, 2029.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Litt. They have a motion and a second. Mr. Look.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. I'm here today seeking approval of a contract with our, our banking, well, our servicing bank contract. With Wells Fargo. We are currently with JP Morgan. We submitted an RFP through our procurement department, received three bids. The best of the three was the Wells Fargo offering. The. One of the bids did not have a substantial history of municipal banking. Our current banking service contract. Contractee actually put in some requirements that made them kind of ineligible for being continuing on as our servicing bank. And so Wells Fargo is the best choice. And so I'm just seeking your approval to approve our contract to move forward with a new servicing bank.
I have a question. When there's no bank locally, how do you handle that?
Because I'm, I'm a fairly crafty lady. I have other bank branches that we have. Kind of. Smaller contracts with they are not considered our servicing bank. However, I have contracts with. Washington Federal Bank of America, Western Bank. JP Morgan Chase and also Wells Fargo to accept deposits through. Other branches so that we can actually. Provide services in areas where they don't have accessibility to a servicing bank. And these are all collateralized and, you know, very safe. We also provide scanners in every entity that is an external entity of the county. To, if they are processing check deposits, they can deposit directly into our account through their scanners in their location. So I, I, because we're such a huge county, I try and make sure that they have the services available to them in, in. Fairly local situations. Some of our people have to drive a little bit. Say from like Bowie to Wilcox. However, that's, that's. Pretty much the longest distance that I like people to have to go to, to get rid of their money and give it to us.
And the reason I ask that question so the public could understand there is a requirement that schools and different entities can't keep money. You know, it has to be deposited daily almost.
Yeah.
And so we have to make it so that it's accessible to them.
Absolutely.
So they do have a place that they can drop off the dollar fifty cents if that's what it is.
Yes, we are.
But that's the law. So that's the way we operate.
Yep. And we, we keep it as painless as possible because we do want absolute compliance from. These special districts and, and schools that are at such great distances from the county seat. And even though we like, we do not have a JP Morgan Chase in Bisbee, even though we are the county seat, we also do not have a Wells Fargo. However, we're gaining an extra branch by going with Wells Fargo because they do have a Douglas. Branch that so we have a Sierra Vista and a Douglas now. So that'll be exciting.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't. Thank you for that work.
None at this time. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. So if there's no further comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and so ordered. Okay. How many more properties have you got for us to give to the state?
Oh, Madam Chair, you know, I'm constantly.
So we have a motion. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of the county treasurer for the abatement of property taxes and interest. On personal property and the removal of personal and real property tax liens on treasurer's certificate of clearance number twenty twenty four one oh two. Through twenty twenty four, one sixty five.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second? So we have several properties.
We do. Unfortunately, most of them are personal property, which is again derelict or unusable or not even there anymore. There is a very substantial, probably almost a third of, of the amount of money that we are abating. That is a centrally assessed mining property. That the, the corporation that owned it is no longer in existence. They, there's no hope of ever collecting on this money. And, and it is no longer even a parcel. So that, that is why the, the very large amount for the eighteen thousand nine forty and seventy cents. However, the rest of them were, were, our, our sheriff's office is basically working themselves out of business on helping me with these. Because we are getting much shorter lists that you have to sign off on, but we are making progress.
We need to get them off the rolls so people. Like schools and districts won't expect that money to be coming in because it won't.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and so on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Development Services. Could I have a motion on this great?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve grant agreement three dash zero four dash zero zero four nine dash zero one three. Two zero two four for the construction of a vertical vision guidance system, precision approach plan. Indicators, PAPI at the Cochise County Airport and the amount of three hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. With a state and local share match of sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventeen each effective upon acceptance.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Cottler.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration to install a PAPI. At the Cochise County Airport. A PAPI is a precision approached path indicator. For as the grant states, it's a vertical visual guidance system. The total project cost is three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The FAA share for this project is ninety one point zero six percent. For the grant amount of three hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. And as you mentioned, the state and local share is four point four seven percent at sixteen thousand, one hundred. And seventeen dollars. The installation of the PAPI will improve the safety of aircraft landing at the Cochise County Airport, especially at night. The staff's recommendation is approval of this grant.
Okay, is there money coming into the Cochise County Airport that will cover the local share?
We do have a couple of revenue sources at the Cochise County Airport. The primary one is the flow rate. At the airport, which is the fuel that's sold by the FBO there. We have a contract with the FBO to manage the airport for us. So we don't have any county staff there. Just a contract. We also received revenue from the FBO for the hangers that we allow him to then charge for, for lease.
So is it enough to cover the local share?
Should be more than enough to cover the local share. The flow rate has been increasing quite a bit quarterly since the new FBO has taken over that airport.
Again, the question.
Yes, when I, when I first read it and it said sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars each, I, I was trying to decide if there was two of those costs. But there is just one cost of sixteen thousand.
And ADOT is covering the other.
All right. That is, I just wanted to clarify that.
Madam Chair, I would add that this installation will enhance the Cochise College Aviation Program.
How is that, Tom?
Well, because everybody needs instrument approaches to practice on and this device assists. In instrument approaches, which is what pilots need to learn.
Good, okay. Any other questions or comments?
I'm like, I will say one more thing. They've been asking for this. The pilots that fly in and out of the Wilcox, this is the Wilcox Cochise Airport. Have been asking for this for, before I was elected to be a supervisor. So probably ten years they've been making that request to me. And I think it's something that's very valuable. We have some actual commuter jets now that fly in small commuter planes. That fly in and out regularly because of some of the industry in the community. And I think it's going to be very beneficial and very safe. So they need that.
I agree. I'll add that, you know, it's at night, it's like a black hole for many of the pilots and they'll avoid the airport. This will, having a PAPI that will increase the traffic and more than likely increase deal sales and revenue to the county.
Good.
Hearing no further comments, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. Okay, let's look at item number eight. Have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the award. Of invitation for bid IFB twenty four dash zero three dash D E V dash oh one. To construct the vertical visual guidance system, precision approach path indicators, PAPI at the Cochise County Airport. To Payvex Corporation, the amount of two hundred, two hundred and forty six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars effective upon acceptance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Coxley?
So since you've now approved the grant, we can move forward with construction and this is. Approval of the contract with Payvex to install the PAPI at the Cochise County Airport. Construction cost of two hundred and forty six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. The remaining amounts of the total project cost of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, five, three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Is for engineering services, administration and the flight check.
Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none now, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and unanimous and approved. Thank you. Okay, Health and Human Services. Could I have a motion while Susan is speaking?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve amendment one of the intergovernmental agreement IGA CTR zero six, three, eight, four, seven. Between the Arizona Department of Health Services and Cochise County Health and Social Services. For the Arizona Prescription Drug Overdose Prevention Program and the amount of two hundred and forty seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. Effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty three through September twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisor Jed and Crosby. Today I'm here requesting approval of the overdose prevention. IGA. Under this grant, we are tasked to compile case summaries and conduct overdose fatality review meetings. In twenty twenty three, we, we reviewed thirty seven of the thirty nine overdose death cases. From these case summaries, we provided recommendations back to ADHS, Arizona Department of Health Services. This program also provides linkages to care services to inmates who will be released. Our public house social worker worked with four hundred and eighty nine inmates who were incarcerated due to drug use. She assists them with navigating the process of reentry and recovery. Services by placing them into treatment facilities if the judge does decide that. She also helps them enroll into services such as. Access or other services that will provide a. Successful reentry process.
So you have one person, full time person through this grant?
We have two point four five. We have one public house social worker who's housed at the jail. And then we have the epidemiologist who conducts the case reviews. And a part time person, which was, is my position.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair and Ms. Hagel, yesterday Ms. Hagel sent me some statistics and I don't have, happen to have my email open in front of me. But Ms. Hagel, could you share those statistics as far as the, well, what you sent me yesterday? If, if you have it handy. If not, that's okay.
Sure, no. So out of the four hundred and eighty nine inmates, our social worker worked with one hundred and sixty five inmates. Was able to get them placed into treatment. And then we only had seventeen of those one hundred and sixty five that returned to jail for various reasons. So seventeen out of this one sixty five, I think is a pretty good rate.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to share my observation, which is that the inmates that are interested. Or the inmate interest in rehab, rehab, in my opinion, is proportional to the time they expect to be incarcerated. In other words, the longer they think they're going to be incarcerated, the more interest they might have in rehabilitation. And the shorter time they think that they're going to be incarcerated, the more they're just thinking about getting high when they get out. So I don't know whether, I don't have any statistics to back that up, but you might apply that to whatever the program is. Thank you very much, Ms. Hagel.
So his observations, you take them into consideration. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you. State and federal legislation. Seems like everybody's gone home or out to lunch, not doing much at the legislation. So I don't have any, any particular thing to discuss. Mr. Kochman.
Thank you.
State of the county.
Yes.
Three sentences.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Jed, Supervisor Crosby. Just to tell the public that this coming Monday is Memorial Day and most county buildings will be closed.
I think you did less than three sentences.
I tried to impress.
All right, any current events, Mr. Crosby?
All passed. Thank you, ma'am.
I do have one event that has already occurred. I want to give a little bit of shout out to the city of Douglas. For the Douglas days. It was a free event for the community held at the, the park in downtown Douglas. And the weather was great. People were really enjoying all of the. They really had an outstanding venue of dancers and singers and. A showcase of the Douglas history, so to speak. So I wanted, I wanted to compliment them because it was, it was truly a, a, a very nice event. District three, you have any special?
Thank you.
All right, next meeting will be today at one o'clock in the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a work session. Regarding the Facilities Department informational update. Having said that. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.